Good evening, everyone. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Miller on the question. Please vote now. Deputy Mayor. Okay. Motion carried seven zero. I'd like to mention that Deputy Mayor Schreier is joining us virtually this evening. Good evening, Deputy Mayor. And the treaty acknowledgement, I will go to Councillor Donovan this evening, please.
Thank you. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamsis exists on the traditional territory of the Wollesdweig, Malacite and Mickmok people, whose ancestors along with the Passamaquoddy tribe signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community for which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Donovan. For the mayor's remarks, I have a few this evening. And I wanted to start by recognizing a wonderful young man that I got to meet on the weekend, who has a big trip coming up. On Sunday, the Make-A-Wish Foundation held a wish reveal party at the Qplex in honor of a young boy named Jacob. Jacob has a heart condition that saw a pacemaker installed when he was only ten months old. At the party, he found out that his wish had been granted, and he will be going to Disney World in Orlando, Florida. I had the privilege of being on hand and witnessing the joy it brought to he and his family. Thank you to Make-A-Wish Foundation for continuing to make dreams come true. And congratulations to Jacob. I hope you and your family have a wonderful time in Disney World. Last Monday, April twenty ninth, I had the pleasure of speaking with students from the grade two and three classes at Quispamsis Elementary School during a recent visit. We spoke about the responsibilities of local governments, including the roles of mayor and councillors and other officials. Thank you to all the students of Ms. Learent, which Ms. Donovan and Ms. Blackyer's classes for arranging my visit. I also appreciate the invitation to Mr. Herman's French immersion grade ten class this past week. They asked great questions around what we do as municipal politicians and about how young people can get involved in shaping our community. Thank you for making me a part of the discussion on local politics. Next, we had an excellent turnout for our public engagement on the future of Cedar Ridge Park on Saturday. Staff continue to look and gather input on what you wanted, what you want to see in a reimagined Cedar Ridge Park. If you missed out on Saturday's gathering, to offer your thoughts, you can take the online survey by going to our new website at quispamsis.ca and clicking Have Your Say. Speaking of that new website, you may have noticed we have a fresh look. And it's a new look for quispamsis.ca. So the town's new website was launched last week to replace the previous quispamsis.ca and the Qplex website. We want to provide a website with current relative information that is easy to navigate and offers more opportunities for you to provide feedback. We hope you enjoy your new online experience. You may notice some friendly young faces working around our community over the next few months. This morning, I enjoyed an opportunity to welcome these students to the work roster of Quispamsis. We have twenty-five summer students starting this week in recreation, engineering, administration, and other departments. They will perform vital functions for our town and are key members of our summer staff. It's important for us as a community to offer these opportunities for young people to learn on the job and explore some potential long-term career opportunities. Our 2024 Cleaner Greener Quispamsis campaign wraps up tomorrow. You still have a chance to collect litter and debris from around your home and your neighborhood and deposit those bags in bins at Memorial Field and James Rolfe Fields parking lots. Town will be out tomorrow cleaning up, and I will be there to join them and invite council members to join us as well. Thank you for helping to keep our town clean, green, and beautiful. May twelfth is the thirty-second anniversary of fibromyalgia awareness as recognized by the World Health Organization. According to Fibromyalgia Association Canada, between two and four percent of Canadians are living with fibromyalgia. That is almost two million people, and there are still more Canadians who are not counted in these numbers because they are another, they have another primary condition such as cancer, cardiac issues, et cetera. In recognition of Fibromyalgia Month and Awareness Day, sorry, Quispamsis Town Hall will be lit up in purple from dust to dawn on May twelfth to dawn of May thirteenth. On behalf of myself as mayor and Quispamsis council and staff who knew him, we express our sincere condolences to the friends and family of Jerry Marr, who passed away last week. Jerry was a councillor in Quispamsis from two thousand and six to twenty-ten and was a passionate supporter of building the Qplex for our community. He was very active politically and championed many causes. He will be missed. Finally, a remember, a reminder, sorry, to please drive the town posted speed limits. More people are out and about, students are enjoying their walks to and from school, and residents are out walking more frequently. So please abide by the town posted speed limits. Thank you. Onto item number four, disclosure of interests. There are none. Item number five. Presentations, mapping opportunities for solar and wind energy development in Quispamsis. In attendance are virtual consultant Kirby Calvert, Co-Mapping Solutions, Inc., with a staff report from Planning and Development Services and Manager Development Officer. Mr. Calvert, hello, welcome.
Hello. Thanks for having me this evening. I'm not sure if you all will be able to see my presentation if I share my screen or if I should just walk through the presentation without sharing my screen.
We have the, the report on screen.
Okay.
And it was in our kit, so, so we're familiar with the contents.
Okay, so I can, I can just go forward then without, without sharing my screen. I'm just not sure if, yeah.
And, and what we'll do, Mr. Calvert, is open up the floor to questions at, at a certain point, or if you want to keep going and finish it, and then we can open the floor to questions.
No, that sounds great. So, yeah, I'll take a few moments to just sort of to set the stage here. First of all, thank you very much for, for hosting us this evening. I understand that these council meetings lead to very long days and long evenings. And so we are very grateful to have the opportunity to take a few moments to, to discuss this report. And I also want to extend our gratitude and sincere thanks to your excellent staff who have made this process quite seamless, productive, rich, and fulfilling, I think, hopefully on both ends and certainly on our end. It's been, it's been a wonderful experience working with your staff through this project. So the reports, you have, I think, two items in hand. One is the, the extended report, the full report that we put together after our spatial analysis of the opportunities to develop wind and solar energy across the town of Quispamsis. And alongside that, we've truncated that report in a, in a short presentation that I'll walk through this evening. That truncated presentation does not share any new information. It is all the same information. We just thought that we would streamline it a little bit for the purpose of stimulating some conversation here, recognizing that you have a lot on your plate, and we wanted to do our best to make this as digestible as possible, an item on that full plate. So the report that we've, we've put together, as stated in the presentation and in the report, was through the use of funding from the Environmental Trust Fund. And we focus primarily on what we call community scale solar and wind energy development. So these are relatively large scale, about a megawatt, at a scale that could support at, you know, at very least a neighborhood and at the very most, the, the town of Quispamsis broadly. So we're looking at relatively large systems. We're looking at ground-mounted or land-based systems, solar and wind energy systems. And what we were aiming to do was put information into the hands of, of planning officials and into the hands of you all as councillors that could do a number of things. One is to raise awareness generally about where the opportunities lie. The other is to provide the information needed to anticipate where developers may express interest in building wind or solar across the town of Quispamsis. So in other words, if and when developers come knocking, where would we expect them to want to locate their systems? We, we feel that that information is critical to have in the public domain so that you can respond with, with some information. And the third purpose is to begin to inform possible policies and bylaws that you may develop to proactively facilitate and guide the development of, of these resources. So those are really the, the three broad objectives of this report is to get the information in your hands that could achieve those, those three objectives. So I've talked a little bit about the report, and on slide three, you'll see that we are sharing with you a high-level overview of our methodology just to give you the sense that there is some rigor and some nuance behind the mapping work that we do. So this methodology, you'll see this inverted triangle, starting with theoretical potential all the way down to opportunity areas. This is a methodology that we've been developing and refining for over a decade now of, of research and application across Canada. And the idea is to pull together a large volume of spatial information through which we could filter out areas that are technically inaccessible and legally inaccessible for these relatively large systems. And then with the remaining land that we have identified as being technically and legally accessible to prioritize or screen within that remaining geography where these systems might be developed with relatively lower regulatory risk, meaning relatively fewer development controls, less of a chance of impacting sensitive areas, either culturally or environmentally sensitive areas. So we're trying to identify those areas that are relatively low regulatory risk or relatively more accessible from a regulatory perspective. And areas that are likely to be economically viable. That is areas that would have relatively lower spatial capital costs associated with building a system. So in the end, what we, what we aim to produce at this stage of the work is are a series of maps that can identify for us where solar or wind energy development could occur at, with relatively low regulatory risk and relatively lower spatial capital costs. And that's the awareness raising part, is providing a general sense of, of where those opportunities exist. Now we have some information through which we can anticipate where developers might look. And we can start to think about what policies and regulations we may want to, to consider to control development or facilitate responsible development. And so that inverted triangle, we're, we're only focusing on the top half of that inverted, inverted triangle. So this is just the desktop mapping phase. We do, as part of this methodology, recommend participatory mapping, and we'll talk about that as a matter of, of next steps when we go forward. We share with you in slides four through ten, the, the findings that we have pulled from the work that we have done to date. On the first slide, slide four, the first slide of the solar energy overview, the key findings of solar energy, what we're doing there is just trying to visualize the strength of the solar energy resource in Quispamsis relative to jurisdictions that have proven an operational solar energy system. So you'll see the state of California, the country of Germany listed there. Quispamsis falls in between those two jurisdictions, even in Germany, where there is a relatively weaker solar energy resource, relatively fewer kilowatt hours in a, in a year in, in Germany relative to Quispamsis. There is still eighty megawatts, or excuse me, eighty gigawatts worth of solar energy installed in that country. And for reference, all of New Brunswick has four gigawatts of, of energy from all sources. And Germany has eighty gigawatts of wind. So it's, you know, we, we, we provide that visualization as a way of indicating that this, these technologies are certainly feasible from a, from a resource perspective, but more important for our purposes, for the purpose of achieving those objectives, is to identify where that solar resource can be accessed at, again, at relatively lower regulatory risk and regulate relatively lower spatial capital costs. And the next two slides there, slides five and slide six, really tried to get into that. So all of these, I'm thinking, looking at slide five, excuse me, in particular, all of the areas that we've identified here are indicative, meaning we are identifying areas at which solar energy could be a viable land use. We're not trying to impose solar energy on these, these landscapes. There would need to be a number of next steps undertaken in order to, to truly identify whether these are economically viable and socially acceptable. So at this stage, these are just indicative of where the, the opportunities lie. The darker shades you'll see there are the so-called best opportunities, meaning relatively lower regulatory risk and relatively lower spatial capital costs. And we've also put in a couple of boxes there, two hectares, four hectares in size, you can get a sense of scale. You would need somewhere between two to four hectares of land in order to install one megawatt of solar capacity. One megawatt roughly being capable of powering nine hundred homes as a very back-of-envelope metric. Okay, so, so we've, we've got a map that gives us a general sense of where these, these systems could be developed. On slide six, we were taking cues from town officials who had expressed some interest in evaluating further some sites that are under municipal control or are greater levels of municipal control, in particular, the, the water, wastewater facilities landed, and in particular, the lagoon area in the western portion there, which, to my understanding, has been discussed already as a site for a possible solar energy system. And, and there are at that site roughly ten hectares of forested land. So, you know, anywhere from four to, four to five megawatts worth of capacity could, in theory, be developed at that site. So those are the maps of, of solar. On slide seven through ten, we discuss wind energy. Couple of notable differences with wind energy. So one is, you'll see in the, the wind resource map, what we've done is classified the wind speed according to International Classification System that developers will use to inform their investment and technology selection decisions. That's that four-fold classification you see there. So in Quispamsis, you, of course, you want to be in the, in the blue. You want to be in those darker shades of blue. And you'll notice that those darker shades of blue are, you know, level two, let's call it, in the classification or class three, excuse me, level three, class, class three wind. Not the premium, not class one or class two wind. And so we just wanted to use this language here when we say the town is not a premium site for wind energy development to set expectations. That is not to say that wind energy development could not occur here. It is certainly within the realm of, of possibility. There have been sites across New Brunswick at which even single turbine projects, so one turbine, one, two to three megawatt turbine, the sort of typical industrial-sized turbine you would see, have been built on wind speeds that these data would indicate are around class three. So in other words, it can happen. It's, we're not saying that wind cannot be built here. We're just trying to set expectations and saying that it's not. Quispamsis is not necessarily a premium site. The other key difference here is unlike solar, we didn't go so far as to map that gradient of most accessible to less accessible over the more to less cost-effective, because there's one key ingredient missing that we need to, to think about, and that is setback distances from noise receptors for those wind turbines. So we provide in the report a map that indicates the base case for wind. It shows areas in blue at which, in theory, under prevailing regulatory conditions and regulatory constraints, wind turbines could be built. But what we have done is modeled how that land responds and how the accessibility of the wind resource changes if we expand the setback distances. And we have used setback distances that are relatively common among peer jurisdictions. Setback distances of, of a hundred and fifty meters, which is roughly the length of one and, one and a half times the height of a, of a tower, a turbine tower. We've used five hundred meters because that is relatively common across some of the peer, your peer jurisdictions. We've also used one kilometer because there have been jurisdictions that have set a one-kilometer setback distance. And you'll see in slides eight through ten that the area that is accessible for wind energy development shrinks considerably as you go along to zero land being available once you set a one-kilometer setback distance. So this hopefully gives you a sense of how access to the wind resource in Quispamsis will change depending on how stringent you would consider being on the setback distances for, for wind turbines in Quispamsis. So those are the, that's the overview of the, of the findings. We do indicate some possible next steps, as alluded to earlier, rooted in participatory mapping exercises. In other words, bringing these maps out into the community, to the public, to key stakeholders, to have deeper dive conversations about them. We have presented two possible threads of work, and I just want to make the point that these are not mutually exclusive, meaning that they, they are threads that can be woven together. And they are threads that are aligned with, are consistent with the role that council would like to take as it relates to renewable energy development. So there's various roles, but at least two of which we, we touch on here. One is council could facilitate responsible renewable energy development. And that is, one example of that, as we note here, is to develop a, a bylaw that sets out the conditions under which a wind or solar energy system might be approved in the town of Quispamsis, to give developers a, a very clear sense of what their citing constraints might be, for instance, exactly what that setback distance will be, and also to proactively address some concerns that, that have been identified in the community. And so pursuant to that, we recommend undertaking some participatory mapping exercises where we take these maps out into the community and we talk about areas of concern, areas of interest, as a way of developing an issues list that can be used to, to formulate policy or, or bylaws in the future. The other role that municipality, municipality can take and the town council could take is to more actively work to develop these projects. And participatory mapping exercises can be used to undertake deep dives into specific sites with, potentially with landowners, with, with key stakeholders, for instance, MB Power, and others who would need to be involved in the decision to, to build or not at a particular site and would need to be involved in the development process in terms of financing, permitting, all, all manner of, of steps involved in the, in the development process. We've, we've used participatory mapping exercises successfully in the past to stimulate, stimulate those conversations. And we should also note that alongside these two elements of participatory mapping, there, there would be some further background research. We did provide some key background information in the report. But there would, could be and would need to be further information gathering on particular projects that would be comparable to the kind of projects that we would envision for Quispamsis, as well as on zoning bylaws that have been adopted by peers. We've done a cursory glance in order to inform our work, but a more structured analysis could also be undertaken, either, you know, by a consultant or, or in-house. So we talked about the overview of, of findings and possible next steps, and, and there's a lot more details in the report, as noted in the last slide of the presentation there. And with that, I'll, I'll thank you again for, for lending in the air and your, your wonderful staff again for, for supporting the work. And open it up for any questions now or in the future. You can always feel free to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calvert. Certainly appreciate the, the desktop work that went into this and the information that's been presented. Some of the numbers were a little scary when we talk of tens of millions and when we talk of lining up the infrastructure in order to bring power from a very remote area to an active area. And, and, you know, when I looked at St. John Energy getting a twenty-five million dollar loan from the city of St. John, looked at Belle Dune closing down to the tune of four hundred and fifty megawatts, and how is that going to be supplied? Who is that going to affect? So certainly, you know, energy, climate change, all of these things have to be factored. And, and my big one is, of course, the return on my investment. So that's something that I think would be quite interesting to hear as well. So I will turn the floor over to council for questions. Councillor Donovan, please.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It was fairly intriguing, and I appreciate the comparison of, of Quispamsis to California because I've been saying for years that Quispamsis is the California of, of Canada, and everybody seems to look at me a little bit funny. But recently, I had a chance to pass through the United States, and I went through, I believe, Massachusetts and Connecticut. And it was fairly interesting to see how they're dealing with solar energy. You know, I went, I, I didn't venture off into any of the towns. I sort of just stood stuck to the highway. But on the highway going through, I believe it was Massachusetts or Connecticut, they had a bunch of solar panels actually lining the highway. So, like the culverts in between the highway. So it's, it's unused space that was, you know, that's actually has a purpose now. And I think that's sort of, if, if we move in this direction of, of having solar in our town or in our region here, I, you know, Quispamsis, it's, it's not a, in my opinion, it's not a very big area, and, and it's filling up very fast with houses. So I think in order for us to move forward with something like this, which I'm hoping, you know, it will happen at some point, I, I think we need to, you know, look to these other places like the States and, you know, Germany and so on, to actually figure out how we can get those solar panels in, in, in different places that are unused currently, instead of trying to put them in maybe lots that can be used for other, for other things. But I don't want to ramble on too much, but I do appreciate your presentation, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Donovan. Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. Interesting, and for some, this shouldn't be shocking, because if you look at solar energy, actually, New Brunswick is one of the best places in the world because the, the amount of sun we get in the, in the winter and in this, in this summer. You also see a lot of homes now putting solar energy in because they're being financially rewarded by the, by the province, by the feds or by the province where when the, when we do it, we don't quite get the same tax breaks, same as by an electric car. They save ten grand, we save zero. And we are working on, on some of our solar things down, especially down by the lagoon, so I think that's excellent. My question is, in the areas that you found that it would be the most accessible and easiest to do and things like that, is that on private land or public land? Because if it's on private land, there's a whole bunch of different discussions, and if it's on federal or provincial land, that's a different discussion as well. So it's mostly all on the other side of the, the highway. So I can't tell from this map if it's private or public land.
That's a great question. The vast majority of the area that we would have identified would be on private land. And that is one of the reasons why we were very careful to qualify these, these results as being indicative of, of possible land uses and not as opposing any particular land use and, and suggesting that this is where we're going to build our next solar farm. It is trying to provide information, bring information into the public domain so that everybody just has a general sense of, of where these systems could be viable. So, yeah, so there would need to be, in, in those cases, you know, the, the landowners as well as the developers that might approach those landowners for leases, they would benefit from clarity around the conditions under which they could develop a solar farm. And so that's where, you know, municipalities tend to step in with the, with the, either a proactive or reactive bylaw to set the conditions under which that private land could be used to build, to build a solar farm if, if there was a design. to build to build a solar farm if if there was a desire to to control it in that way.
And and thank you for that because I I guess my my my, when I look at some of the ask for later on, you know, ask for money for more discussions and more more insight. If this is all on private land, we're not MB MB Power, we're not St. John Energy. It's great to know where it is, but it's unless there's somebody who's going to come in to develop it because we have very few net zero houses here. We're getting a couple more, but it's cost effective. So I think knowing this is great. We've also kind of ruled out the turbines because of the one kilometer ratio that we need and the size of them. And they're very, very nice looking. They make some noise and they're not cheap to put up either. So so I I think this is great for information. I guess this goes back to a twenty eighteen ask when I read back. I I just don't know if we start looking at extra engagement and putting more funds towards it until we know. It's good to know for the people that own this land, they can they can reach out, but I don't know if it's the town's responsibility to do more engagement to see what's going on. Because I don't know if we have, we must have some type of bylaw already. I'm looking over at, no, no, okay. Because I see a lot of people putting solar panels on their houses with different places now. So again, I think this information is great. I just don't know why we would take it any farther at this time. So thanks.
Yeah, if just a point, a couple of points of clarity. So one is, that's right. So there isn't a bylaw related to ground mount systems. The rooftop solar systems are very different. But with ground mount, you're talking about landscape changes. It's pretty significant landscape changes, impacts to agricultural land, impacts to habitat. And, you know, that that is all of public interest. So even though it's private land, there are some public interest concerns related to development of that land for solar and wind. So that's where we're trying to show where these systems are likely to emerge if and when there is development activity as as a way of informing possible next steps about developing bylaws around it. So that would be if one possible roles. We're not saying that that's what the town has to do, but that is one role that many other municipalities have taken is to use participatory mapping and use engagement to develop those those bylaws. And I'd also just want to to clarify that we haven't. The report hopefully doesn't rule out wind turbines necessarily. If you wanted to impose a one kilometer setback distance, you would be essentially saying you're ruling it out. But if you were to establish a hundred and fifty meter setback distance, there are still plenty of viable areas for for wind turbines. Always saying that with the caveat that we're not saying that's where you should and will build wind turbines. We're just trying to provide the information to inform.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. It's very informative. I'm just wondering if most of the land identified might is privately owned. What is the disadvantage of putting solar panels up? You hear the advantages, you know, but there has to be a reason why they're not everywhere and why people wouldn't put them on their properties. I'm curious of that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So this this speaks to the development process broadly. And we're speaking to citing in this in this case, right? And thinking about at what sites would you would you build? The first thing that needs to happen is there needs to be a market for solar energy. So in other words, like MB Power and or the government needs to say, we need more solar energy. And then developers will start to identify land that they think they could develop to provide energy at a reasonable cost or at a cost that would be competitive. So that that needs to happen. And that isn't, that is starting to happen in in MB in New Brunswick. MB Power in twenty twenty three released an expression of interest for new projects. You may have heard the news around the Ervings and the massive project that that they have proposed is part of a response to that. So developers are starting to look and they're starting to knock. Why a specific landowner might not be willing to do it comes down to a couple of things. One is the 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 lease conditions. So is it, what is my, what is the risk that I'm taking as a landowner to lease this land over to to a developer? There needs to be, the second would be an economy of scale. So some parcels of land might not be large enough to build a system large enough that you could be competitive. And so there might need to be some land assembly happening. So if the parcels developers will go after those relatively large parcels that they don't have to assemble first so they can achieve economies of scale without involving multiple different landowners. And the third is regulatory uncertainty. So as as a landowner and as a developer, if I don't know whether or not I'm going to get permitted to build in a particular site, I'm I'm less likely to go there. So they're more likely to go to jurisdictions where there is greater certainty around us, for instance, a green zone, green energy zoning bylaw. So where they have certainty around where they could build and the constraints under which which they are working. Fourth and final, sorry for long winded, but the fourth and final, the key one is access to the grid. So so these areas might be, might look pretty good, but there are might be other areas outside of Quispampas in New Brunswick that aren't mapped here that could be closer to transmission system, for example. The good news is that you're not, you as a town, in in that case, are not absorbing any of the implications, except as a ratepayer, you're not absorbing any of the cost implications associated with that. Those are private landowner decisions. Your role in those cases is just to make sure that the public interest is is defended if and when a solar and a and a wind turbine is built on those those areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for your report. I was just wondering if I'd like to address a question to our municipal planning officer, Dwight Colburn. Is it premature to create a zoning bylaw?
Through you, through Your Worship. I'm not sure if we would say it's premature. However, we do need to go through exercises to be established. First of all, the interests of the community, interests of council. And and I have a bylaw that's, or a bylaw, whether it's a zoning bylaw or a separate bylaw, that's reflective of the capacities of the community as well as establishing, as indicated in the report, you know, what what would be fitting for the land, so the land use provisions. So whether that's hundred and fifty meters or one kilometer for a a wind turbine or where if somebody comes in with a solar array, solar firm, you know, what would we be looking at in terms of the bylaw? So it's, you need that information, you need to engage, you need to identify. You know, if the report came back and said Quispampas is not viable for any of it, then it stops right there. You're not going to get that interest. But when the interest comes, it's being proactive. It's saying, okay, we've already aware of where those areas are. If you're looking at developing it, then here's the constraints you need to meet. But that needs to be born out of actual engagement using evidence based data to be able to make that decision. So whether it's it's drafting, you know, bylaw policies, we need some direction, some guidance to be able to do that. So it's reflective of the community, reflective of of where we are currently.
Thank you. Did you have another question?
No, I was just wondering Mr. Colburn, whether by establishing some parameters for for general interpretation by the community, if it was in advance of the actual time required or whether we're putting the cart before the horse and whether we should have an information meeting to to gauge the interest of the community? Or just, I was wondering if you, as a planning officer, had any had any intention of generating information for to keep, you know, within the town? Or whether it's too early to take on that particular job if it takes in a lot of time and that?
Go ahead.
Through You, Your Worship. So the recommendation that's come from this through the planning is that is to is to look at the next steps in terms of the participatory participatory mapping, as we refer to, so you're actually engaging the community. In that motion or in that recommendation, it says that we also become active and seek funding. So I think it's very important to realize that the cost of this report was covered by Environmental Trust Fund. So it wasn't out of a budget item out of out of the municipality. It was an application that was made to Environmental Trust Fund, and we were successful in getting that, which allowed us to this report. So part of that recommendation is that we actually seek funding to assist us in this venture and then, but also at the same time, start opening up conversations and dialogues as we are having right here tonight, right? These constructive dialogues that allows planning to say, okay, here's where we're going forward. So having a path forward. So it's being proactive. It's actually recognizing that these asks are going to come. They're inevitable. They're they're going to come. So it's it's best to be prepared for them so that we're able to guide and respond to those asks accordingly. So, yeah, so part of that is the recommendation is to start, continue this conversation, to actively seek funding to assist us to prepare for for the ask when they come and have our bylaws and policies in place.
Thank you. Councilor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much to the representative from Co-Mapping Solutions for a great report, interesting stuff. And like a lot of people, I'm very hopeful for the use of renewable energies to be implemented over the coming years right in our community. I think that would be wonderful. As Councilor Miller points out, we've got folks who are, you know, taking advantage of the downward pricing of rooftop solar panels. It's not cheap still, but it's cheaper than it was. And I have just a couple of questions for our development officer as well. Do we have, are we aware of developers in our region who are currently expressing any eagerness around this sort of development in our community? Is that something that we have on record yet? Anybody putting their hand up about that?
Through You, Your Worship. So in terms of actual land developers within our community, no, the focus is primarily, you know, the actual residential or the standard development for that. In terms of energy development, we have not had sort of active people pursuing this. You know, we do have the people who are approaching in terms of whether that's sort of like building mounted, roof mounted, supplement their energy. But also looking at, there has been discussions about whether these systems could go into a neighborhood to help, you know, support apartment buildings. So you have multiple apartment buildings on the site that actually installing these systems to provide, you know, some supplemental power to those buildings as well. So those things get discussed to through the planning department. But in terms of an actual energy developer approaching us at this stage, no, but again, it's it's being able to be ready and prepared and have the information available.
No, I, well, I take note of your mention about the the study to date has been funded by the Environmental Trust Fund, as you point out. And as Councilor Miller points out, I mean, the municipal planning bylaw was updated in twenty eighteen, I think, to reflect, you know, sort of an earnestness about moving forward on renewable energies as a a part of our policy about trying to develop the town. And so certainly, it's, these things are a long time coming. And and it's sort of stand, walk and run, I guess. So putting stuff in their proper order, as Councilor Olson points out. I guess I'm just wondering, in terms of the sort of generalized statement of you know, undertaking community and stakeholder engagement to better understand public sentiment, I I read that and I think that stakeholder isn't just the people who own land that could lease it for the development of a solar farm, but it could be the those developers themselves, of course, as well. And I I I would imagine that if we were to chip away at some kind of an engagement strategy along that line, it would it would take into, it would take that into account, I would assume we would kind of. But I, like like Councilor Olson, I'm, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth there, sir, but I I'm a little unsure about how 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 pressing this is at the moment. And I perhaps nobody's, nobody's trying to say this is a five alarm fire, I guess. But I like the idea of crafting bylaw and, you know, getting provisions in place with an eye on the future, given that commitment was made some years ago along this line. So it seems like it's probably a good idea to keep that going. And as you pointed out here, let's continue to seek funding to kind of afford the things that we have to do. But I'm just a little unsure if it's the right time for us to kind of go out locking arms to the community, talking about, let's get together and talk about solar and wind possibilities for Quispampas. So I'm I'm just, I'm left a little, I'm like, I, generally speaking, I think this is great, but I don't know if this is the right time to push forward on that. And I just take note that the motion is three different things. And so I don't know how to vote in favor of the motion, but disagree with one piece of it. I'm I'm left a little unsure about that. So, for example, seeking funding, I'm all for that. Undertaking the crafting of bylaw and policy statements, I'm all for that. Engaging the community and stakeholders currently, I'm not sure that this is the right time for that. So I'm just a little uncertain about how to vote in that regard. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. And and again, I just want to agree with the Councilor Bigger. So this started in twenty sixteen, we're twenty eighteen, we're now in twenty twenty four. This, you know, you go to Palm Springs, you see when you see the wind turbines, you see the solar panels. I've yet to see a whole group of solar panels here in New Brunswick. I think this is a good thing. I think it's going to happen. I just don't think it's going to happen quickly. I would prefer that our town and staff focus on more things like water and things that we know we need that will get us growing. This is something that will come, but it will only come when MB Power or something changes. But there's a lot of other things, whether it's the the loop from Newfoundland, the whole bunch of stuff from Quebec. This is great, and I think eventually it will come. I don't think it's coming anytime soon. And I would prefer that, yes, if they give us some money and we want to look at it more, perfect. But I don't personally believe that we should be spending time and effort on this when we have a lot of other things that our town should be looking at. So I I think it's going to happen. I just don't think it's very quick. This is already a six year span from when we started talking about it. Unless you can correct me, I don't know where there's a whole bunch of solar panel farms supplying MB Power, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm listening to all the comments, and they're all great comments. And there are three recommendations. I'm just wondering if through you to Mr. Colburn, if this would be in my mind, a great document for the Climate Change Committee to review and take that under their wing and see, work with the document? I just wondered what his thoughts would be on that.
Mr. Colburn, please.
Through You, Your Worship, to Deputy Mayor. Just a point of clarification, those are recommendations. So my staff report does not give a motion. So that is the discretion of council, whether they want to take that as a recommendation, form it into a motion. So part of that recommendation could be, or, you know, from that recommendation, it could be that we seek funding, and if it's successful, we move into the next, the next level of crafting policies or stakeholder engagement. If that's the desire of council is to be continued. I think that the important point here is that, I guess, to be to be to the point, it's not a receive and file. Is that to continue to build on this this activity that's been done, the information that we have? And whether that's to, you know, seek funding to to move the thing forward? That could be a recommendation or a motion. And if it's successful, then we then we start looking at the the community engagement and crafting policies around that, so.
Right, thank you. I I understand that. I was just wondering if you think that the whole document, the whole review of this document should go under the Climate Change Committee to deal with and make recommendations to council that way?
Through through You, Your Worship, I to me, that would be the home for this. It is a, it is a climate change, and it is part under the municipal plan. That's where we find it in terms of addressing climate change and and the policy statements that are in the municipal plan, or to start looking at renewable energy under that umbrella of climate change and and addressing and taking steps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I think it would be prudent and relevant that it would be part of the climate climate change for them to review and make recommendations to council moving forward.
So would we be I think we would be okay to make a motion that this this document be forwarded to the Climate Change Committee for review and recommendations to council?
Mr. Colburn.
Through You, Your Worship, I think that would be a relative motion that the council could consider.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier, are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Would you mind repeating it, please, for the clerk?
The the I'm trying to find the name of the, yes, the report. Be trying to find the name of the report, just a sec, I have to go back. The mapping.
Opportunities.
Mapping Opportunities Report be forwarded to our Climate Committee for review and recommendations to council. For review and recommendations to council.
Thank you. Is that being seconded by you, Counselor Bigger? Thank you. On the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Mr. Culver, thank you very much for your presentation this evening and for the work done on this. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you in the near future. Have a good evening.
I look forward to it. Have a great evening, everyone.
Item five B, introduction of new Quispam SIS website. Tim Rozell, Communications and Engagement Coordinator. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, if you'll bear with me, I'll make this presentation from my seat here as I can. Maneuver the uh, the the website as I work along here. Um, and and thank you for taking the time to uh, to take a look at our new look at quispam sis dot C A. Uh, this is a a very exciting time for us. As uh, you may remember, a request for proposals was issued back in October of twenty twenty two. Seeking bids on a new website that would replace uh the one that went live in two thousand fifteen. And would actually merge the previous quispam sis dot C A and the Qplex website under one single URL. We got thirteen responses to the, uh, to that RFP. After whittling down the competition, we settled on a company called GHD Digital. Which actually specializes in government uh website and construct, uh, website construction and management. So this was not only a website refresh, it was actually a complete rebuild right from the ground up. Uh, just to give you a quick overview here, our goals in this process. Uh, number one was to create a very simple and easy website, one that is easy to understand. Using easy to understand language, very easy to navigate and very easy to find what you're looking for. We wanted it to be friendly and visually appealing. As you can see on the homepage here, we have a, a video uh running on a loop. And and this is one of the things that we wanted, uh, the ability to do was to have video or static images be the first thing that uh people see. When they come to our new quispam sis dot C A. We wanted the website to be bright and colorful. With lots of pictures, lots of video as well. And, uh, you know, and those libraries continue to be built as we move along here. We wanted this site to be relevant. Uh, some of the items on the previous site uh had unfortunately gone out of date and and it was time. For refresh in those areas. It was important that we aligned it with the strategic plan as well, and in particular. The pillar commitment to the community, uh, that one, uh, and in particular, community engagement. We offer a lot of opportunities. And I'm gonna get into those a little bit more here uh as we um, uh, as we continue to move along and and uh. Uh, in this, uh, in this discussion here. We wanted it easy to use on the back end. And what I mean by that is you have an editing system that allows you to update the website. And one of our goals was to. Give the opportunity to members of our staff that wanted the ability to edit their own pages that are specific to them. We wanted to give them that chance. This website and and this backend editing system gives us that option. And we're really looking forward to. Uh, integrating staff members into uh, uh, into the editing process and giving them a little bit of, of say, in, uh, you know, in what they have. On their, uh, on their particular pages, rather than just having to to forward it on to someone like myself uh to to add to the page. And one of the other things we wanted is that we wanted to be accessible. And what I mean by that is, uh, for those who are visually impaired. Uh, we wanted the ability to be able to change font size, to be able to have alternate text attached to photos. Things like that. New Brunswick does not have accessibility legislation as of yet. But uh, in con, in consultation with the appropriate departments within the government, we have been told that it is coming. And so we wanted to be ahead of the curve. With this website and making sure it was accessible for people that need that accessibility and and want and need the ability. To navigate our website easily a- and without issue. So I'm not going to get too, too far into each of the individual pages on here, but I do want to point out a few things. Uh, that you may find interesting. And and of course, I will take questions once my presentation is complete. I wanted to start with the homepage. Uh, as you can see, very, very colorful and and with the video uh in the, uh, in the banner, we really, uh, we were really. Uh, focused on getting that ability with this new website, and we're really happy about that. When you scroll down just a little bit here. All of these icons are, they're basically what we call quick links. So during this process, we went through and we. Uh, gathered anecdotal evidence, feedback from staff and and even just from my own experience in in my role as communications manager. For what many people were coming to our website for. What are the most common things that they're looking for on our website? So that's how these quick links came to be. They want to come and apply for a permit. They maybe want to look for a job. They want to find out where our parks are. They want to know about the Qplex and about things like public skating and and different public schedules. They want to know maybe their garbage and recycling schedule or or how they can, uh, you know, how they can uh, uh, find out information about what. Goes into garbage and what goes into recycling, things like that. Uh, water and sewer information, how you can rent a facility, all that kind of thing. So. We made these quick links. You just click one, let's choose rent a facility just for the heck of it, and it'll bring you right over to the facility rentals page. Where you have the ability to look at all the different facilities that we offer for rent. Uh, and click on any one of these and it will bring you to those pages. And each one of those has a a link to our facility booking system. Through the program that we use called A Perfect Mind. Uh, just to go back to the homepage here to continue on that for a moment, as we scroll down a little bit more. We have this big marquee here. This is going to, this is something that can change over time. We have the ability to update this anytime we like and as often as we like. And so we were going to put. Relevant information in there for, uh, perhaps for the season. So, for example, uh, you know, learn to swim at the Qplex. We have swimming lessons that are. Um, you know, that people can sign up for right now. So you can click on there and sign up for swimming lessons. Um, you can see building season is here. You can apply online for your permit. All of those types of things would go into this marquee and it would change over time, maybe. You know, maybe at uh, at at holiday season time, maybe we put something else in there about uh, about the dreamland display or about the outdoor rink. Or or something like that. So that was, uh, that was another thing that was, uh, really exciting for us. And then down here. Toward the bottom of our uh, of our homepage, we have a couple of of um, uh, of items here. Number one is our events calendar. This is something that we wanted to have on the homepage. This is simply a link to it. Um, but it gives you just a glance. At everything that's going on, uh, in terms of what we have on our site. And if you click the view all, it takes you right to our events calendar. With all of the information in there, as you can see, the last few days of Cleaner Green or Quispam SIS have been populated in there. Uh, we have the Cedar Ridge Park uh consultation that happened over the weekend. And and some other things as well, the townwide yard sale. So. Different events, like all the different activities that are going to be happening in the Arts and Culture Park this summer, all of those will go in here. And be populated in here. And one of the nice things about this calendar, and this will be a a bit of a theme as I move on here, is that. Users can subscribe to this calendar and they can get information delivered right to their email inbox. So. Every Friday, they will get an automatic email that's generated by our system that says, here's what's happening in the next week. In the town of Quispam SIS. And it will list all of the events over that next seven day period with links to each. Um, each item in our calendar. So if you wanted to find out, oh, okay, the the townwide yard sale is happening this week. Um, you know, in your email, you would have a link to that and it would open right up to the event on the events calendar, and it would give you all the information that you want. Uh, a- as it pertains to that particular event. Those emails are automatically generated. They come out every Friday. So people have the ability uh to subscribe to that. And and again, it's very easy, very convenient for them. To get that information. Not only that, but if there's an event that comes up sort of at the last minute, if we have something, uh. Uh, that that just sort of pops up that, you know, maybe won't make the digest because it's, it's happening before the next digest goes out. Well, we also have the ability to send that out immediately to to anyone who has subscribed to those updates. And it would just say, a new event has been added. To the, uh, you know, to the town of Quispam SIS Events Calendar. Click here for details and it'll take you right to it. So going back to the homepage here once again, over on the right side of your screen, you'll see news and notices. This is where, uh, as the headline suggests, you will find all of your news items. And public notices and also road construction updates when those apply as well. So you can see here, we have a couple of public notices. Uh, that I believe we'll be discussing a little bit later on here as a council tonight, uh, that, um, you know, that were put up. A while ago now, uh, and that will come down uh, tomorrow, uh, once they are dealt with. Um, but this is where all of this information will sit. And so if we click view all on that. You go into your news and notices section, you can, um. You can filter your search. You can search the news feed if there's something in particular you're looking for. Uh, you can filter it by category. So if you want. Uh, a news update, uh, if you want uh, an update on road construction notices, public notices like the ones I just showed. And general notices about different things that that may be happening in the community. All of that information would be here. And once again. Users have the ability to subscribe to one or more of these different categories. So you just click your subscribe button here. Go in, enter your information and check the boxes that you want to subscribe to for your updates. Click subscribe. You'll get an email to your inbox. That will ask you to confirm your subscription. Once you do that, you will start getting emails into your inbox with the latest information. That pretty much covers it for the homepage. There is a, a also a subscribe button down here. A couple other quick things before we move on to a, to a different section here, but. Um, we thought it was important to include our land acknowledgement. Uh, and that goes on every single page, at least the first couple of lines of it with a link to the rest of it as well. There is a full land acknowledgement. Uh, in our section under Living in Quispam SIS, but we felt it was important to include that on our website as we refreshed it as well. And then at the bottom, we have the town contact information, all of our social resources and and different things like that. Different ways to connect with us. Uh, as I mentioned off the top, one of the keys of this website, uh, rebuild or refresh, however you want to term it, was the fact that. The Qplex website was going to basically be merged into quispam sis dot C A. And so if I click on the quick link to the Qplex page, uh, this gives you, this page gives you. Access to everything that you would have had on the old Quispam, oh, the old Qplex page. Simply by looking down on here and over to the right side, this is called a subnavigation menu. You've got. Individual pages for the pool, for the walking track, for McCluskey Brothers Conference Center, the arena, the playground. Different public schedules, the sports shop, the rinkside sports shop, uh, and the Qplex trails. It also has general information about the Qplex itself. It has our ninety second uh video that we uh, uh, that we put together last year. Uh, and some other information about the Qplex being a lead gold building as well. And uh, so we felt it was important to also include the Qplex, Qplex logo on all of the pages that are appropriate to the Qplex because. Uh, the, the Qplex brand is something that I think and and that we've sort of gathered as we've uh. Continued over time here is 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 become very important to the community. So we felt it was important to continue that representation. In this as well. And it also, if you notice over here on the side, these little contact pods are specific to each page. So these aren't all the same on every page. For the Qplex, it would have Qplex contact info for, um. You know, for Town Hall, it would have the, the main line. Uh, we also have, uh, you know, uh, contact pods for planning and and for. Other areas as well. Uh, I showed you the events calendar a little bit earlier, so I won't get too far into that. Um, one of the other things that I do want to point out. Is over under town government. This is where, in case you're wondering where your bios are and and where council information is, it's under town government. Under the mayor and council section. There's everybody there. Over on the right side and even over here too, but over on the right side, we've got a link to council meetings. So we have information about, uh, you know, our council meetings, when they are, how people can address council, all of that type of thing. And then we have uh links to our regular council meeting agendas and regular council minutes. These are no longer PDFs that are going directly on our website. Uh, the agendas and the meeting minutes are now living in a public portal through Laserfish. Uh, so this is accessible. Um, uh, for the public, and it's also very easy for. Uh, our clerk and our assistant clerk to drop that information right in there. And if any changes need to be made, it can be done very easily without having to, uh. You know, to to get into changing links and things like that. This page also has a, a, a link to the live meeting. Uh, if, uh, if people wanted to watch the meetings, uh, as they had previously. We also have a council calendar here. If we click on this. This brings you to a council calendar. And once again, you can subscribe to this calendar in case extra meetings have been added. Uh, special meetings, what have you, you can subscribe here and you will get information on when the next council and planning advisory committee meetings are. Uh, if you, uh, if you choose both of those options by subscribing to that calendar. Want to point out bylaws as well. In uh, in the previous quispam sis dot C A, bylaws were also. Um, PDFs that lived uh as files directly on the website. But uh, now, under this new system, if we click on bylaws here, this again takes you into the public Laserfish portal. And these are all very easily updatable and and they can be opened and downloaded by by members of the public without issue. One of the exciting pieces that we added to this website, I mentioned this off the top, uh, and uh, and her worship mentioned this in her remarks. Uh, before this meeting started or at the very start of this meeting, is the have your say page. Uh, this is a page that literally allows uh members of the public to comment and and provide feedback to us. In one central location. So, uh, we have a couple of different things going on right now. We have the Hammond River Park Expansion product, uh, project. And we also have the Cedar Ridge Park Master Plan. We have access to both of these right here. So if you click on either of these, I'm gonna click on the Cedar Ridge one right now. It takes you to the survey, uh, that, um, uh, the online survey that has been prepared. So that we can get feedback from members of the public. I actually just changed this link earlier today. Uh, because up until now, it was directing right to the event, the um, uh, the public engagement that happened on Saturday. Uh, so I had that as an event on the events calendar. Now I've directed it just to the, uh, the survey itself, so that people still have that opportunity. To provide feedback through that, uh, you know, through that survey. We also have a general comments forum, so if anybody wants to, uh, you know, offer their feedback on on just about anything and everything, they can just go right into here. And, uh, and they can provide their information and their description of their comment and just click submit and it comes in directly to. Our, uh, our general email folder. And then we also have the, uh, report a problem, which is the Q one one system. Uh, that takes you right to Q one one and, uh, and allows people to, um, you know, to, uh, to provide any information that they may have about an issue. They may be having. One last thing I want to show you real quick is, um, under building and development is our permit section. I know council is well aware that we have moved our permit process online to an online application portal. That portal is accessible from this site as well through a number of different links, uh, including right here. If we just click on that, takes you right into the Laserfish portal and bang, it's right there, easy for, uh, uh, for anyone to use. Uh, should they be, uh, looking to apply for, uh, for any type of permit through the town of Quispam SIS. Uh, just as I wrap up, I want to say a couple of special thank yous. First of all, to Sherry Levac, who is the town's uh Administrative Services Coordinator. There is a whole. There is a whole whack of technical terminology and technical aspects to this website that, that Sherri negotiated through, worked through. This, what we're seeing here tonight would not be possible without all of the work that she did. I get to present this tonight, but this is every bit as much her website as it is mine in terms of, of putting this together. And I cannot thank Sherri enough for all of the hard work, day and night, that she put into getting this website ready to go. From a technical aspect, but also from a visual aspect, she was very, very conscious and cognizant of, of everything that went on in the construction of this website. And so a special hat tip to Sherri for that. Kevin Barrett, who is a name that may be familiar to some of you here around the horseshoe tonight. Kevin took many of the photos that you see on this website. He did not take this video here, but many of the photos that you see on our different pages are photos that, that Kevin did take over the course of, of several months. You know, once this process began and even a little bit before that. And also just to, to the rest of staff that provided their input throughout this process. I know it's been a longer process perhaps than, than many were expecting, but it's been, I think, a solid process and one that I think has worked out very well. And so thank you to staff that provided their input and, and feedback throughout this process. And with that, I will close my presentation and, and I am open to questions.
Thank you very much, Tim, for the very thorough product that we have now and certainly updated and more current. And to Sherri Leveque, to the Administrative Services Coordinator, yourself and all of staff for their input. Because it takes, takes everyone as part of the organization to build a website such as that, to get the information accurate and to get everything in there. So certainly from one who is not a very high-tech person, I'm very impressed with it and, and very happy to see the, how brilliant it looks and how, you know, it, it's just so updated. So very, very happy with it. So thank you for the work from everyone that's on staff. So I will go to comments or questions. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. Congratulations, it's a really wonderful website. So again, congratulations to you and your team. I think just, you know, the accessibility piece and just the easy-to-use function is very obvious. So again, kudos. I do have a few questions. I'm wondering how we're planning on promoting like the new features to try and really kind of motivate the residents to, to play with the website a bit and kind of see some of those cool features that you identified? So that's my first question, then I have a few other questions.
Through you, your worship. We, when we launched this website last week, we decided to, to craft it as what we call a soft launch. So we didn't make a whole lot of, of pomp and circumstance surrounding it. We wanted to get it out there and, and iron out any last-minute kinks that, you know, that may have come up as, as we, you know, as we viewed this site now live instead of simply on the, the test website that we had been viewing the last little while. So over the next few weeks, for sure, we will be publicizing it more in terms of, you know, pushing people to subscribe to the Events Calendar with all of the different events that are coming up this summer, pushing people to subscribe for the, the News and Notices, the Road Construction Updates and things like that, that are, that are very, very important to people. So it, it's going to be an ongoing process, but, but that has been part of the plan, you know, really ever since it was, it was determined that the soft launch was going to be the way to go. You know, the plan was to be comfortable with where we were at once it was live and then sort of work our way into, you know, into that type of, of interaction with the general public.
I'll tell you my other questions and then you can answer them. A lot of the council have links on the bottom of their email to the old form saying if you want to present to council or the Q11. I'm assuming those links will be the same or do we have to delete them and put new links in? Because mine still work, but I don't know if it's because it's bringing me to a, like the old website. So I'm not sure if those still work. I was also wondering, it looks like, which is awesome that we're going to have minutes and agendas of the council meetings very easily to, you know, findable. In the past, I could never find the agenda. And the agenda has like all the, the reports, the attachments. Now I noticed that it's only the current agenda. And I don't know if it's just that we're going to, from this point on, we're going to populate them or are they going to come down each time? Or are they going to stay there as well so people can go back and look at reports or look at presentations? And then my last question is, I couldn't find a map. And I know years, I've been asking for a map for a number of years, but is there a place on the website? So again, you know, you can't, can't get maps basically anywhere. And I'm just wondering, is there a spot on the website that if I wanted to get a map of the town, like to download myself, is there, and maybe I just couldn't find it. I'm just wondering if we have that.
So I'll start with that one. Our maps are under Planning and Zoning in Building and Development. We have a link to the maps right here. This is very similar to the previous page where the maps were on the old quispamsis.ca. But this will take you right into a GIS map of, of the community. So that's, that's just under Planning and Zoning. And that, you know, obviously can be, you know, a multi-use type of, type of map for, for members of the public. The, the question about the links, I'm going to double-check those. There were some links that, that did have to be updated once we moved from the old site to the new site. And I know there were a couple that, that had to be changed after the fact. And this may fall into that category as well. So I will double-check those and, and make sure they're directing the right way. Nothing should be getting directed back to the previous site at all. So anything that's being directed there obviously needs to be updated for sure. And I know that was the first question and I dealt with the third one. I can't remember what the middle one was.
The middle one was the agendas, we're going to have.
Yes. So the agendas, if we go Under Town Government and into Mayor and Council, under Council Meetings, we do have the link to agendas. And to be honest, I don't think it has been determined as of yet. And, and I'll, I'll ask the clerk for clarification if this has been decided. But I don't believe it has been determined yet if previous agendas are going to live in that same folder or if it's going to be something that, you know, ultimately goes away. But all of the agendas, when they, when they become active or at least when, when they're, they're posted ahead of a, a meeting, are going to be at that link. And then again, I'll ask, I'll ask our clerk for clarification on, on plans there.
Yes, through you, your worship, for clarification. It was felt that the council agenda packages on our new website would become available for the full year. Previously, once a new meeting, the, the last meeting agenda was gone. But one year we felt was sufficient time, we'll see how that goes.
Thank you for that clarity. And on the mapping question, Planning and Zoning, could, could the word map be included in that as well, in that title? Or is that a challenge to do that?
It's certainly something that can be looked at, yes, as, and, and we may be able to, to add other links in other places so that they're more easily accessible as well.
Just that word, that might help with the identity of, of where the maps would be found. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say congratulations. This is a very nice, very clean, very, you know, fresh and website. I like the video content. It's nice and linear and modern and I think very current. And it's very flowable, you know, as you're outlining for us. It renders nicely on mobile as well. I was just checking it out on my phone and I think it's great. I love the, the, I note the bylaws are all over on the Laserfish portal as well. And that's great. I just wanted to say, well done. It's been a long process, as you point out, but very well done. I'll be looking forward to hearing great feedback from the community about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. If there are no further comments, then, Tim, thank you to you and your team and to Sherri Leveque. Sure.
I just wanted to, to comment or add a little something to your, your comment about how it looks on mobile. That was something that was very important to us. And one of the nice things about the, the GHD program, it's called GovStack that we use to, to edit this website, is that throughout the process, we were able to actually preview what the page would look like on a tablet, on a mobile device, you know, in portrait or in landscape. So we did have the ability to, to be able to, to see what it would look like in multiple different scenarios and, and on multiple screens. And that allowed us to really shape the website so that, you know, regardless of how you're looking at it, you know, it should look clean and easy to, you know, be easy to use and things like that. So I, I appreciate the mention of that, thank you.
Thank you for that, Tim. Moving on. Item number six, Public Hearings, there are none. Item number seven, Approval of the Regular Meeting Minutes from April the 16th. Have a mover on that, please. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, 7-0. Unfinished business, isn't any. Item number 9A, Proposed 2025 Town of Quispam Sis Budget Schedule. Staff report from Town Treasurer, Counselor Olson.
No, I didn't have anything.
Your light was flashing, I'm sorry. Counselor Miller.
Just for protocol, if I have a question, do we have to wait for it to be moved? Oh, okay. I, I just have a question, a concern on the, the schedule again from last year. Fridays when we're supposed to get our documents. To be honest, we haven't for the last two years, got them on the Friday. So every year we say we're going to. But Tuesday is the meeting. And Tuesday is a very difficult day for a lot of us that, that, that work. So I've always asked, can we have it on a Friday? Friday is the easiest day, for me at least, to, for, because if I have to travel things, it's either a Tuesday or a Wednesday. October, November also, where I work is very busy for travel. I don't travel as much, thank goodness. But I would ask that we have our meeting on the Friday versus a Tuesday. I voted no against it last year because of that. So if it's still on the Tuesday, I'll, I'll vote no again. So I don't know if anybody has a problem with having it on a Friday.
Friday after, can I second?
The Friday, just a Friday. I don't care which Friday, just Friday, so.
Okay, so we have in front of us the Proposed 2025 Town Budget Schedule. And we are looking for an approval of that, we're looking for a motion. There's no motion. Counselor Miller.
I would move, we accept the Approved Budget Schedule with the exception of the Tuesday gets moved to a Friday, for the special meeting.
It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Luck, that the Proposed 2025 Town of Quispam Sis Budget Schedule be approved with the full day being on the Friday rather than the two, sorry. Yes, being on Friday rather than Tuesday. On the question. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I'm just wondering, because I know the last few years, you know, again, being a new counselor, there's not a lot, you know, I, I feel like by the time we get to the actual open session for budgeting, like a lot of decisions have been made. And I'm just wondering if there's a way as we move forward, like during council meetings? Like I guess, I don't want to be surprised at budget meetings. Like I kind of feel like by the time we get to the budget meeting, we should all have a pretty good sense of what we're spending our money on for the following year. And the last few budget meet, like years, it's kind of like you get your package and that's when you find out what we're actually doing. And I, and I appreciate that hopefully moving forward with our strap plan and operationalizing it, we should have a better sense of what we're spending our money on. But I guess I'm just wondering if there was, is a way to have some of those discussions, you know, starting in the fall, heading into budgeting so that we're aware of kind of our priorities and where we're headed so that when we get to the actual budget planning day, there's not really any surprises. All of us have had the discussion about kind of priorities and what we're, we want to do and, and kind of moving forward to 2025. So anyway, I'm just putting that out there because I do find it's kind of always a surprise. Okay, what are we doing this, you know, next year? And again, I'm prefacing that with, once we start to operationalize our strap plan a bit more, maybe there won't be as many surprises.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just speak to that just for a second. I don't know if anyone else is, but... So it's, it's up to each department to formulate their budget. And they bring it to us and we get the right to say yea or nay. And that's when we do that. Because we cannot be involved in all of the discussions with each of the departments over a long period of time. So when the budget comes before us, that, that is and has been historically when council gets to say whether or not they're going to approve that budget. So I don't feel that I have been lacking information. I've been here now for 13 years and it's, it's, there's always room for improvement, I get it. But I find that when the budget is in front of me, I get to say yes or no. And I've done both ways in the past. So I'm going to go to Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I just wondered if, with the motion being about modifying the special meeting date, I just wondered if our treasurer has any comments on how that affects anything related to, you know? I, I generally support what Counselor Miller is bringing forward. I mean, it sort of makes no never mind, as my grandfather would say to me. But I just wonder if it has any implication on the process from your perspective.
I guess it's the domino effect, whether or not puts our, our dates out.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Bigger. So again, it's all driven by when the deadline is and the dates that we kind of have allow for as much time to prepare the budget as possible. I will say, we have gotten the budget package out. We may not have gotten the presentations out, but your present, the presentations are not the actual budget document. The budget document is the, you know, the five-year capital that we give, the operating, that is the budget. The presentation is just the, the story behind the budget. What you're approving is really the budget document and the, the spending that we have detailed in there. So again, everything is just driven by the date. So we have to have it into the province by November 15th. So in order to do that, that's kind of how the dates all flow into, into this. So I guess, putting it on a Friday, is it the Friday that week? Is it the Friday the previous week? You know, I just need direction on what date so that we can then.
18 through the 25th.
So two days more would mean we need to give it out to you earlier in the week and we're already crunched for time. So that's, again, that's kind of how it's all built.
So the 25th.
So the 25th, and then it doesn't give us much time to get it back to council on Tuesday the 5th.
So...
Because we'd have to have everything, and again, that's just how it's all designed. But we will do whatever council's prerogative is to do. That's why the schedule is here.
Counselor Luck.
Oh, I was saying last, before last year, it was always on a Saturday. So like, I'm, I'm, I'd like to think that there's a bit of flexibility. So in terms of, yeah, last year was Tuesday and then two years ago it was on a Saturday. So, you know, again, in terms of what is easier for, for staff, but it sounds like it'd be better, it'd be easier to have it the Friday following the proposed date, which is the 25th. And I guess to your point, Mayor, or your worship, you know, I, I agree in terms of, you know, I, I guess in terms of each department being responsible for preparing the budget, I, I completely understand that. But I guess I would like to see some discussion or around kind of priorities before the departments go into figuring out their budgets. Like so, for example, last year, water wasn't even on the budget. around kind of priorities before the departments go into figuring out their budgets. Like, so for example, last year, water wasn't even on the budget. So I guess that's my point is that perhaps if we would have had a discussion as council or a few discussions talking about priorities, because you know, sometimes, you know, with priorities, there's going to be, you know, a higher priority put on, for example, paving one year and say, well, you know, this is going to be our priority next year. So it, it would definitely affect then the departments going back and saying, well, you know what, priority is paving, we're going to put more budget in the paving. So I just would like to have more of those conversations, you know, at the council table to kind of determine what our priorities are. Um, before each department goes back and deliberates on what the budget would look like.
Ms. Brandon, please, town treasurer.
Sure. Uh, through you, your worship, councillor Luck. So again, we do bring the budget to finance committee, um, at a high level, certain points. Um, every year we do provide a five-year capital. So you already have an idea of what is going to be coming forward for twenty twenty five, based on the twenty twenty five five-year capital that was included in your package. So there is that information, um, there. And again, like I said, we do bring it to finance committee at certain points in time to talk about those types of things. Um, but if, again, if there is anything that council is looking for as a, as a, you know, strategic initiative for budgeting, you know, council at any time can make a motion to say, you know, and direct staff to include this in consideration for the twenty twenty five or whatever budget that we're working on. You know, we kind of have to have those motions to be able to action our, our work.
Thank you for that clarity. There's a motion on the table. The proposed twenty twenty five budget schedule be approved with the exception of the Tuesday, October twenty second meeting be changed to, uh, Friday, October twenty fifth. We can change that, I think. And, and put that in. Kirk, um, councillor Miller, are you okay with putting the definitive date in? Is that okay with everyone else? No, if we change a motion, according to govern, proper governance, we have to have that approval through everyone. So a motion was already made. Yes, that's, that's what I was asking. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number nine B. Proposed council maternity parental leave policy. Correspondence from deputy mayor Schreier. So you saw in your kit that there was a, uh, there's been some work done by FCM. And councillor Schreier has said that in order to encourage more women to take part in municipal politics or uh, I guess politics here in Quispamse's, that she would like us to consider having a council maternity parental leave policy. Deputy mayor, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, your worship. Thank you very much. When, um, we were going through the procedural bylaw, um, the, that came to my mind, I thought, I don't think we, um, have anything about, um, leave if your, um, need for maternity leave or parental leave. So I was thinking procedural bylaw, that's where it should be. And then I thought, no, I don't think it should be in the procedural bylaw, but we need to standardize what our position is on, um, maternal, parental, um, leave. It's important. I mean, you talked earlier about speaking to young children at the schools about being involved in politics and, you know, what are the barriers to getting into politics for some women? Um, for some minorities and, and maternity benefits. I'm not going to call them benefits, but maternity, the opportunity to take time off, um, to be with your child after you're, you've delivered or adopted is important. And it is a barrier for women. I've talked to many women who've said, I can't run for council because, you know, what if I, what if I get pregnant, I, I'm going to miss meetings. What if I, you know, this, all sorts of reasons. So I thought, you know, we, we are a progressive community and it's, we need to have something. So I put a motion, I have a motion forward, the one that's in the kit is not my motion. I, I have a motion that, um, staff be directed to create an, um, an amendment to the remuneration bylaw. Allowing a member of council to take paid parental leave for a period of up to ten consecutive meetings. So this has nothing to do with the federal or the federal maternity benefits that they receive. This is our own policy within our council. I believe it makes us inclusive. I believe that it sends a strong message to the, um, residents of Quispamse's that we want talented, young minds coming forward and not to have a barrier, whether female or male, that you're worried about, um, a maternity leave. So that's why I'm asking council to consider that they, um, approve the motion that I put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So. So, uh, I guess councillor Thompson would like to hear your motion one more time, please.
Staff be directed to, to to do an amendment to the remuneration bylaw. Allowing a member of council to take paid parental leave for a period of up to ten consecutive meetings.
Okay, so it's been moved by councillor, or by deputy mayor Schreier. Seconded by councillor Donovan. And on the question. One of the things that I will point out is that we have nineteen council meetings a year. Having, uh, ten paid council meetings would mean that, uh, a person over the span of one year would attend nine meetings, but be paid for all of the missed meetings. So just, I'm just pointing that out for information. Councillor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I, uh, I think councillor, deputy mayor Schreier sort of hit the nail right on the head, you know, and I, I appreciate her bringing this forward. It's a a very important conversation. It's one that I think is, um, certainly long overdue. Um, part of the reason I ran for council was to make sure that young people can get, have the opportunity to get more involved. Um, you know, I may be the youngest member of council, but it's a title that I hope that I don't keep forever. Um, and you know, having this, um, you know, I, when I Googled it, there was a lot of these, these policies and, and they all said parental policy. So having a parental policy within, within the town for council members, I think is certainly, um, advantageous and I, I don't think it, it will harm us in any way. Um, you know, I did a lot of research and, and, you know, Santa, in Sanage, British Columbia, they have a policy and, and there's, there's literally, it's very straightforward. There's no approval. All it requires is for the councillor or the mayor or whoever to, um, basically just write into the clerk and say, I am, I am expecting and this, these are the times that I'm going to be taking off. And, you know, Edmonton and Toronto, they all have similar policies. And we've seen it sort of trickle over to our neighbors in Nova Scotia as well. Um, in certain municipalities there, they're also, um, sort of sticking their heads out and trying to figure out ways that they can, um, support women and, and more young people in getting into office. Um, it's funny, the other day when, when deputy mayor Schreier was, uh, sending that email, I had, I had sent her a link because last year when we went to FCM, I had met this, this mayor, her name was Michelle Buello. She's, uh, the mayor of Timmins, Ontario. And I had seen as I was scrolling through Facebook that the city of Timmins had actually posted that, um, mayor Buello is expecting a child and they had basically listed a whole sort of succession plan slash maternity or paternity parental leave system to show the public exactly, you know, how it was going to work from there. So I think, um, I do think this is something that we should act on and, and I'm very much in, in support of it. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to point out as well, I think it's very, very important to understand that in many municipalities, especially the larger municipalities and even in some smaller ones, your elected officials at the municipal level are full-time employees. And the, there are differences and I know what, I know exactly what, uh, deputy mayor Schreier is, is asking for here. But please bear in mind that, uh, that a full-time employment, whereas we are uh, elected and we receive a stipend, which is different than a paycheck with pension and benefits. Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, deputy mayor. Um, I, I'm just making a quick suggestion. I, I understand exactly what you're going to. Trying to get, instead of ten consecutive meetings, perhaps it's a monthly, just say six months or something like that, because you could have special meetings. You got a whole bunch of things. You could have one meeting a month. Uh, sometimes you could be off for seven or eight months, depending on, on the time. Because currently, as you know, there is a lot that do have the benefits, hundred percent, but those are generally full-time, uh, council jobs, full-time mayor jobs. Well, I could argue our mayor's full-time job. So, um, so I, I think it's, we don't have any other benefits as a council. We also have rules in our bylaws that we can miss two meetings without any recourse and we can miss more than two, as long as everybody agrees. And we've had that happen even this year within our council. We've, people have missed more than three. No problem. So, um, I, I guess it'd be interesting to see. I'm okay with exactly what you're saying is you try to encourage more people to come there, I, or to get here. I, I just don't know the, the policies, because I, I don't know any other, any other elected area that has, has that. And if you have it ten, ten meetings or you call it six months, I think six months is kind of the target you're trying to get to, I think. Because that's, that'd be the standard. Because also you don't, unlike a lot of other places, our job, we don't collect unemployment insurance. We don't get anything else either. So it's, uh, you know, we don't have any benefits at all. So I'm okay with, I just don't know if the ten, ten meetings are the right one, or if you want to put a monthly thing on there. Because depending on what, when it is, and if you do say ten meetings and we have three special meetings, are those meetings okay? They take out of it because we have a special meeting for the budget. We have a special meeting for something else. Then your six months or your ten meetings could end up being four months. So it, it depends on whether you're looking at a monthly allotment or a meeting allotment, because meetings currently are two a month, but they could be more. So just a, a comment.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I really applaud the deputy mayor for thinking about, uh, trying to remove impediments to, uh, people running, uh, for council and getting involved in municipal government. And, uh, as councillor Donovan points out, he's currently the youngest, but he hopes not to be forever the youngest. And we want to do what we can to, uh, you know, try to spur young people on to take part in their communities through municipal government. I, I wish I had a couple of examples that had been included in this to be able to review. And I, I wasn't as diligent as councillor Donovan to go, uh, research it on my own. So I guess I, I guess I have to do a little bit of, uh, homework, uh, after this meeting about it, but I, um, councillor Miller sort of alluded to something here that was on my mind that what, what impediment currently exists in our current structure, the way our bylaw is set up? That would, that would make it impossible for a person who needs a periodic break or, or perhaps a block of time as a break related to a newborn child, or as you point out, an adoptee. Thanks for mentioning that. I'm adopted. What is missing in our current bylaw that would make that a problem if we did not adopt an outright, like sort of an overt parental leave policy? As councillor Miller points out, we have a two-meeting, you know, uh, allotment there for kind of where you don't have to, you could be at the casino or something, I guess, and you don't have to tell anybody, whatever. You can't make it, you can't make it. But I, it seems to me that we're fairly generous currently as a council with, uh, understanding the particular situations that people are in on council and, and, uh, I wouldn't think that we would run afoul of, of uh, someone's needs, uh, as we currently have this set up. And I, it makes me a little reticent, uh, to begin to incorporate overt policies for specific things when we just sort of generally, it seems to me have, for lack of a better term, I guess I'll just call it a catch-all, where we just evaluate the needs of people on an individual basis. But we seem to be a, a, a pretty, uh, as, uh, the deputy mayor describes us a progressive, I hope. And, and certainly I think a, a compassionate and understanding. You know, way of doing things. And so I, I'm just not entirely sure. I guess I just have to research this a little better to understand the advantage. Perhaps it's an advantage in some other communities for other reasons. But I don't see where we currently have that as a brick wall that A, makes trouble for anybody who is currently on our council who would need to have leave for that reason, or B, would, would somehow stymie uh, interest in people running down the line. And so those are my concerns and it's a tricky subject because the last thing I want to do is seem like I'm, you know, poo-pooing, uh, the idea of trying to make it easier for people to run or being understanding for people's parental needs. My partner's daughter and her husband just had their first baby. And Everly, and she's as sweet as can be. And, you know, I could, I think about Bailey, if she was on council, she would need some time, of course, you know. It only makes sense, but I, the absence of this maternity or parental leave policy in our bylaw currently, I don't, I don't think our council would be unwilling or unable to, uh, accommodate the needs of someone like that as it currently stands. And so that makes me wonder why, if we really need to incorporate this as such. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bigger. Deputy mayor Schreier, please.
And thank you, your worship, and thank you for all the comments. I guess at, at the core of this, at the heart of this, is having a standardized policy. You know, it might be fine to say, oh, well, our, our council would, we don't think we'd have any problem. Well, that's maybe what's the council of the, the next council or the next council. Somebody comes to me and says, I want to run. They go to the town, they go, what are your, what, what's involved in running for council? And, you know, what, what's your parental policy? Oh, well, you know, we'll see. You know, don't worry about it. You get pregnant, have a baby, adopt a baby, we'll see. That's not good governance. We need to have some, a standardized, written down saying, yes, if you're, you're entitled to take some time off for parental leave. So, you know, just because we're nice now, it, it doesn't, that doesn't help somebody running. They go, well, there really is no, there really is no policy. They said if I, you know, if it happens, it happens. Well, you know, should I do it? Nah, won't bother. So we have, we have policies for other things, such as, you know, we, we, our, our procedural bylaw, like, uh, and I truly believe that if we want to be progressive and allow people to come forward to say, oh, they have a, a maternity leave, um, package within their, um, council kit. And even if we can't find who has one, why can't we have one? Why can't we be the first to say, yes? We believe that this needs to be stated. Why can't we be, you know, like, that's always like, who has it? Like, who did it? Like, what did they do? I don't care what they did. What we need to do is show our residents in, in our leadership that we are capable and that we are diversified and that we want people to run, that we, we open arms. And I feel that just whether it's ten, whether it's nine, I took ten meetings because you can take the word out consecutive, it can be just ten me, teddy, ten scheduled meetings when you're, if you're going to start going, well, what if there's a special meeting there and a special meeting there? That, what's that do? Well, you know, just let's make it simple. Like it could be just ten council meetings, scheduled council meetings. Not a committee meeting, not a finance committee. And, and put it in and say, okay, now we have something. And we would be the first. Will we tweak it down the line? Probably. Probably. Will there be other things that we'll say we didn't think of? Probably, but that's okay, because it's, it's a start, and if we don't start, it'll never get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Schreier. I guess first, I want to say that I do agree with the idea of a parental leave something. But I mean, I, I think it's ironic, because again, going back to kind of the purpose, is we want to remove barriers, you know, we want people to run, we want to have open arms, like you had said, and ironically, I think actually the time of our council meetings is going to be a bigger barrier when we look at people running, because, you know, to actually get to a six o'clock meeting, it means you have to leave work to try and get to a committee the whole by four thirty, so I think that's a bigger barrier, so, I mean, to your point about having something in policy, because, you know, the, our procedural bylaw, you know, when we changed that time, it wasn't unanimous, and it didn't matter that some people are, have barriers and challenges to that, and it did get changed, and it doesn't work for all councils.
Point of order, point of order, Your Worship, we're talking about the parental leave?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, but I, I guess I'm using that as my example, is to your point, is that I think it's important to have a policy written out, because, you know, just because it sounds like we would do it, it may not necessarily happen. I, I am going to vote no for it, because I am not a fan of doing a fly motion, I, I think what you suggested is good. I would actually like to hear from staff and get staff to recommend something based on best practice, or what is happening out there. I do agree with it, and I think that we should have something, but just to kind of throw something out just for the sake of having it, I would like to actually have it a bit more evidence-based, and see how it's written, and what other places are doing with similar councils that have part-time councillors that are on stipends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Luck. Councillor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with Councillor Luck, I agree with the Deputy Mayor, that it would be a good idea to have, but I'd like to see it researched a little bit more, and, so that we've got the pros and cons of various parts of it. I don't want, I don't believe in, in a shotgun start to something, and with accepting the fact that you're going to make all kinds of changes along the way. I think we should research it first, get more information available. Are we the only ones in the Atlantic provinces? Are we the only ones in Western, in Eastern Canada? I don't know, just what the pros and cons are of all of this, and when, you know, like, when does it start? Is it prior to birth, is it after birth, you know, there's all kinds of things, I'm just kind of curious about, but the overall plan, I, I support.
Thank you, Councillor Olson. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you. You know, I help move, or second this, this motion, and obviously, it's very clear that it's, it's well-supported by, by everybody in this council, but perhaps maybe there needs to be more work done on it, so my worry is if we vote on this, it's going to fail, and obviously, that's not the route I want to go, so I'm curious if we would be better off re, with the permission of council, removing the motion and going with something that was there similar, which was, if I, if memory serves me correct, that, that staff would research it further, so that way, most of us could be in agreement with that, if that makes any sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Donovan. Mr. Kennedy, please, Acting CEO.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. As the Deputy Mayor suggested, it's difficult to research something that's relatively new. I think the motion that is on the table does provide staff with enough background. Obviously, changing any bylaw would require the intervention of our solicitor to ensure that what we were bringing forward was legal. We have reached out to the provincial government in terms of the Local Governance Act, they don't think there's anything that would preclude council from doing this, as far as we know, we would be the first in New Brunswick to move forward with such a policy, and of course, when that suggested bylaw change comes back to council, it would have to go through the regular process, the first and second, and then third and final readings, there would be background along with that, associated with that, to justify or to provide background as to why this is the, the wording that is provided in the suggested recommended change from staff, so I think the motion as is, is not making this happen tonight, of course, it would require a bylaw change, and I think the motion is succinct, but all of the things that go into changing a bylaw would be included in the work that we, we would do before we would come back to council with the proposed bylaw change, and certainly, that would not be at the next meeting by any stretch of worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I take the Acting CIO's comments, I, I take note of what he's saying there, that, you know, if we were to move this forward tonight, it doesn't mean that it's going to change anything immediately, there would have to be some research done, just, you know, as part of the process, and then there'd be a first and second and third reading. It just strikes me that bylaws are changed in relation to addressing problems, and I'm not yet convinced that we have a problem here. And so I just, I don't know that I can support, although I completely support, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'll, I stand to be corrected, I just would like to be able to, I guess I'll join with Councillors Luck and Olson and say that I would love to see some, some research done in a preliminary fashion, before we even, I, I can't really give assent to moving ahead with changing a bylaw, when I haven't yet sort of been convinced of the, of the, that there's a structural systemic problem related to this here in our town, and that's by no means to disregard the importance of what the Deputy Mayor is bringing forward around, trying to remove barriers to anybody but younger people, I think probably especially, to run, and perhaps she has the benefit of having spoken with a lot more people than I have about this, in terms of people who find it difficult, but I just, I, I, I don't think I'm prepared to give assent to beginning the process of changing a bylaw without a little more information on it, so with that in mind, I would, I would still, and, and bearing in mind what the Acting CIO points out about the process and schedule of it all, I think I would still prefer to just get a staff report related to best practices, and then consider our options at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bigger. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you, just to, to touch on that, you know, there's no problem, because it hasn't happened yet, and it will probably not happen during this council as well, so I don't want us to get into a position in the next, you know, municipal election, if all of us are voted out, and it's a whole bunch of young people, which is highly unlikely, but it could happen, if, if it's a whole bunch of young people, or people who could become mothers, or so on, I don't want this council, or this town, to be in the position of trying to figure that out when somebody says, hey, I'm pregnant, because I, I don't think that's fair. But I, again, that's my own personal view, you can vote against it if you'd like.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table, moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councillor Donovan. On the question, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think what the Acting CEO had said is very clear, in order to change the bylaw, there would be more information brought forward, so the motion is crafted appropriately, and, you know, to see a problem, you know, I guess you can look at just the history of how many women are in politics, and to get some data there, and it's not very, and it's not, it's not very pleasant to look at the figures as exactly how many have been elected. We, we're very fortunate in our area that we had quite a few women elected, mayors especially, so it's, it's, it's a systemic problem, and that's been around for years, and why more women are not in politics. So it was just my way of saying, the town of Quispam Sis recognizes that we need to make things easier for women to enter the form of politics, and, you know, child, and childbearing years play a big role, and so I would, once again, say I believe the bylaw covers everything, or the motion covers everything, it's going to come back, if we, we want to, you know, add things, this is just a start, as I mentioned before, so I would strongly support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the questions, been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councillor Donovan. There are no more questions, comments? Please vote now. The motion has been carried, the nays are Councillors Miller, Luck, and Olson. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. It's not, it didn't show up, okay, I, I have it, no, 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 I'm sorry, Councillor Miller, it, it just came up on my screen. So those, those who were nays were Councillor Luck, Councillor Olson, and Councillor Bigger. I have it right that time. My apologies, Councillor Miller. My screen was slow bringing that up. Item number ten, bylaws. Item A, East Gate, East Gate House of Prayer, 442 Gondola Point Road, institutional to single and two-family residential. Councillor Bigger, please.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion on this, Your Worship. I move council postpone third and final reading of municipal plan bylaw amendment zero five four dash zero seven, and zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash four seven, until such time as the site is remedied to the satisfaction of the Department of Environment, recognizing that the deadline date for enactment of the bylaw amendment is May twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, and if this is, if this date is not met, then the applicant would be required to resubmit a subsequent application and restart the legislative process.
It's been moved by Councillor Bigger, seconded by Councillor Miller. On the question, on the question, Councillor Donovan, please.
Thank you. From what I gathered while I read, maybe I'm wrong, was that, you know, that we did a lookup of the property, and it showed that there was a, there was an oil spill or something along the line. I'm trying to understand why, or maybe prevent this from happening in the future, I'm trying to understand why that wasn't included anywhere at, at any time during this process, as, as prior information, and, and, you know, maybe hinting towards the fact that maybe going forward, if somebody comes to council looking for something like this, we could have the background information of if there was any major, like an oil spill is a major, is a major issue, so, you know, coming forward to council, or, or moving forward, maybe if we could have that little tidbit of information in the staff report, so that we can maybe avoid some of this in the process, but I'm not, I'm not placing blame on anybody, I'm just trying to make things a little bit easier.
Okay, I don't know if any staff want to respond to that. Jennifer Jarvis, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to Councillor Donovan. Yes, it was late in the process before it came to our attention, that information was revealed to staff at the onset of the application process, and I, looking at land gazette will become one of my first steps now in the process, so I have learned from this in going forward, so thank you for your question.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. On the question, Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have one quick question. So if, if the, I, I knew that property was contaminated, I was of the understanding that it had been remediated, but apparently not. So they're not required to remediate that property?
Pardon me again through you, Your Worship. There is an order issued by the province to the, to the landowners for remediation, to clean it up, however, reading through the documents, it seems to be something that's very hard to enforce, because it's quite expensive to remediate contaminated sites, so they do provide an order, which means that it's contaminated, nobody, no mortgager would lend money for that to buy or purchase that lot, there are certain things that, that would not be permitted to happen, however, they can't, because of the expense, I, I guess the province doesn't want to take that on, and the, the town doesn't want to take it on, so it's, it's left to the landowner and, and to comply, and they're working towards that, as they have written in and explained, they've taken over the property in twenty eighteen, they're new, they're new owners, and that, you know, they are, they're working towards remediation.
New owners of the church?
The, the church property was sold in twenty eighteen to the East Gate House of Prayer, and so they've sort of bought this contamination issue, because the contamination occurred in two thousand and seven, so it's been an ongoing issue. They are hoping to have it cleaned up, especially with, with what's happened, with the request for rezoning and subdivision. Thank you.
And I believe it's been with the Department of the Environment since two thousand and seven, so. Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would say to, to Ms. Jarvis, don't kick yourself too much over your process to find this stuff out. I, I'm disappointed to discover that the proponent, having now declared that the plan in selling the manse, separating the two PIDs and selling the manse, was to, apparently to raise funds to remediate the site, that was never part of the process when it came before us, so I would let yourself off the hook about that. I'm disappointed to discover that that's, I, I wish we had had that information in the first place, and I can sympathize if it's something they've only found out recently, but when I poured through the various labyrinth of emails, I, it didn't seem to me that that was something that anybody was unaware of from the proponent's perspective, and I have to assume if their intention, as they lay it out, was to sell the place so that they could get money to take care of the fouled soil on the larger PID, or whatever, then, then they, they must have known that, I guess, but anyway, I, and there's another church that meets there now as well, right? So East Gate House of Prayer has kind of closed up shop officially there, but Reverend Phil Hutchings in St. John, he has a church that meets there now, so it's, there's a different church meeting there now, just an FYI for everybody, but in any case, I'm disappointed to discover this, but I'm glad that we've been able to catch it in time to make sure that it didn't go through as a, a sale anywhere, and, you know, the system seems to be working, so that's good, you know.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bigger. Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Mrs. Jarvis, I'm wondering, in terms of protecting the public, so this is more of a process question around more than New Brunswick provincial government, I would like to think, like, I guess I feel bad for these new property owners that bought a contaminated building, and it sounds like they didn't know it was contaminated, is that correct? And I guess I'm just wondering in terms of, like, when you search a deed, when you're buying a house, like, is there a process, or, you know, is there something missing, so that if, you know, there's an environmental kind of whatever on that property, it wouldn't show up when a lawyer is searching the deed, so someone doesn't end up buying something that, you know, is a huge headache after they buy it?
Ms. Jarvis, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I, I believe that they understood that the land was contaminated when they purchased it, because their lawyer would have advised them of the land gazette posting at that time, so there is a process, that because there's an order, the information has been posted on land gazette against the property. If they were going forward for a mortgage, a bank would not, it's my understanding that a bank wouldn't lend to a contaminated site from some of the information that was provided through Dylan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Luck. On the question, it's been moved by Councillor Bigger, seconded by Councillor Miller. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item ten B, under bylaws, one fifty-seven Palmer Brook Road, PID number three zero three, five three seven, six seven, parcel A, Andrew Harrigan and Brad Lockard, six six nine, one five five, New Brunswick Inc., rezoning application rural to light industrial. And there you see the items under that. And there you see the items under that. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, I would move third and final reading be given to municipal plan bylaw number zero, five, four, dash, zero, eight, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis, respecting the Quispamcis Municipal Plan, rezoning of the property at one fifty-seven Palmer Brook Road, a portion of PID number three, oh, three, five, three, seven, six, seven, from rural to light industrial.
Shall we read that now? It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger. And would you read that in its entirety, please? Counselor Miller. On the attachment, do you have the attachment? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Amendment number zero, five, four, dash, zero, eight, to municipal, oh, yeah, that one. We okay? Okay. To municipal plan bylaw number zero, five, four, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis, respecting the Quispamcis Municipal Plan, being enacted by the council of the town of Quispamcis, the municipal plan bylaw number zero, five, four, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis pursuant to section twenty-four of the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick is hereby amended as follows. By redesignating the following property from rural to light industrial on the future land use plan attached to bylaw number zero, five, four, subject to the property owner entering into, entering into a development agreement pursuant to the provisions of section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act, twenty-seventeen, chapter nineteen. A parcel of land identified as a portion of one, five, seven Palmer Brook Road and PID number three, oh, three, five, three, seven, six, seven, and further shown as parcel A on the amending subdivision plan, McQuinn subdivision, Palmer Brook Road, and dated July fifth, twenty-twenty-one. And said parcel be shown at, on the municipal plan future land use map as light industrial. Read first time April second, twenty-twenty-four, read second time April second, twenty-twenty-four. Read and enacted third time Tuesday, May seventh.
Twenty-twenty-four, thank you very much, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Item number ten B two. Proposed zoning bylaw. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I would move the third and final reading be given to zoning bylaw number zero, three, eight, dash, forty-eight, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis, respecting zoning to rezone the property at one fifty-seven Palmer, Palmer Brook Road, a portion of PID number three, zero, three, five, three, seven, six, seven, from rural to light industrial.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question.
We have to read it.
And that's going to be read as well.
Be it enacted, be it enacted by the council of the town of Quispamcis, that zoning bylaw number zero, three, eight, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis, respecting zoning pursuant to the Community Planning Act, Act of New Brunswick, is hereby amended as follows. By rezoning the following property from rural, RU, to light industrial, LI, a parcel of land identified as a portion of one fifty-seven Palmer Brook Road and PID number three, zero, three, five, three, seven, six, seven, and further shown as parcel A on the amending subdivision plan, McQuinn subdivision, Palmer, Palmer Brook Road, and dated July fifth, twenty-twenty-one. And said parcel of land be, to be shown on the zoning bylaw number zero, three, eight, map as light industrial. Read the first time April second, twenty-twenty-four, read second time April second, twenty-twenty-four, and read third time, uh, May seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Item C. Proposed bylaw number zero, six, six, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis regulating the proceedings of council. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would move, I guess I, um, excuse me, I guess I would need to read this as written here. Like to make a motion of adoption, whereas a public notice has been published on the town of Quispamcis website pursuant to section fifteen, three of the Local Governance Act describing bylaw number sixty-six, a bylaw of the town of Quispamcis regulating the proceedings of council, and whereas the proposed procedural bylaw will replace the existing procedural bylaw, number zero, three, three, with the following summary of changes. References to the Local Governance Act versus former municipalities act. Changes in regular meeting start time to six PM and curfew time of ten PM versus seven PM and eleven PM. Addition of relevant definitions, more governance surrounding electronic meetings, housekeeping items for clarity purposes, authorizing at the discretion of the CAO, certain communications to be acted upon at the administration level, administrative level, with council members being notified of action taken. Addition of the process for election of deputy mayor. Addition of governance clause describing process for communication of council and use of communication tools similar to the clauses contained in the Code of Conduct bylaw. And whereas proposed bylaw number zero, six, six, received first reading April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and second reading on February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, now therefore be it resolved that third and final reading be given to bylaw number zero, six, six, a bylaw of the town of Quispamcis regulating the proceedings of council enacted this seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four, and procedural bylaw number zero, three, three, be repealed.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Thompson, on the question. Please vote now. Deputy Mayor Schreier. Favor? She put her hand up. Six to one, with the nay being Counselor Luck. Item ten D. Proposed bylaw number zero, six, seven, bylaw of the municipality of Quispamcis, respecting the Kennebecs Valley Emergency Measures Organization.
Thank you. Whereas a public notice has been published on the town of Quispamcis website pursuant to section fifteen, three of the Local Governance Act describing bylaw number zero, six, seven, a bylaw of the town of Quispamcis respecting the Kennebecs Valley Emergency Measures Organization. And whereas the proposed bylaw will authorize the formation of the KV Emergency Measures Organization, KV EMO, when deemed, E, E, EMO, not EMO, when deemed necessary in cooperation with the town of Rossay, and provides for the following provisions. During an emergency, the town is responsible for the direction and control of the municipal emergency response, unless the incident would be better managed as a coordinated KV EMO event. In that case, the fire chief shall act as the KV EMO director, who may appoint a KV E, EMO deputy director for each town. The proposed bylaw includes definitions, general parameters, process for state of local emergencies, and the power of the towns during a state of local emergency. Indemnity clause, penal, penalties for violations and enforcement measures. And whereas proposed bylaw number zero, six, seven, received first and second reading April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved, the third and final reading, reading be given to bylaw number zero, six, seven, a bylaw of the town of Quispamcis, respecting the Kennebecs Valley Emergency Measures Organization, enacted this seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-four.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Item number eleven, new business, ascent of council, Quispamcis Memorial Arena subdivision plan, KV Food Basket Land Transfer. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, I'd move the council grant ascent to the Quispamcis Memorial Arena subdivision plan so that this plan can be approved by the development officer and registered in the provincial land registration system, and that the land transfer to the KV Food Basket Incorporated be undertaken by our town solicitor.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck, on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero, item eleven B, ascent of council, JKE Quality Homes, Inc., lot two, two, dash, four, and land for public purpose. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I'd move council grant ascent to the JKE Quality Homes, Inc. subdivision plan, so the plans can be, so the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration in the provincial land registration system, and the LPP land vest to the town on filing of the plan.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, your worship. Through you to our planning officer. This, this, this one is a land for public purposes, this is the, the wetland, the brook area on this. Why do we take land for public purposes that's a wetland?
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Thompson. So wetlands are regulated by the province. We, our, our subdivision bylaw provides provisions with respect to how we take land for public purposes, one of them is with respect to stormwater management. So if we can capture an area that's acting as a natural drainage or stormwater management area, then it's in the best interest of the municipality to be able to, to capture that. The other element to recognize is that why, while wetlands are regulated by the province, it does not, it does not prevent somebody from purchasing it, paying compensation to the province and then destroying it and building on it. If we have ownership of it, then that protects it for time immemorial.
We'll have a second question from Counselor Thompson, then we'll go to Deputy Mayor Schreier, and then to Counselor Luck.
Okay, so I, I guess I have a question with regard to that land for public purposes. As, I don't know if you're aware, but when the subdivision was built on Shade Tree Lane, the, uh, brook area, which was a brook, and a wetland, that was invested in the town for land for public purposes. That's no longer there. That has been infilled, people have built. And so they've built in there, but that, that was a piece that was land for public purposes when that subdivision was built. I guess you'd have to go back and look at that. That's why I'm asking about that wetland. And do people start to infill? Yes, they do. Because they've done it with that particular piece.
Through you, your worship, by, but us by owning it and becoming more aware of it, it gives us the leverage to be able to approach them and, and address the issue. So again, I'm, I'd have to go back to look at the shade tree and the whole history of it. But moving forward, that is something that we, we monitor and we, we make sure they're protected on that level. So we're actively looking at what encroachments are happening on LPP. There is a, there is a, a project initiative of planning that is starting to approach these property owners to let them know that you're encroaching on land for public purposes. So we are aware of it and we continue to monitor it.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, thank you, Mr. Colburn. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, your worship. My, my question was on the same lines as Deputy, as Counselor Thompson, and I'm thinking, well, if it's land for public purposes, then the province has control of that. And why would we take that? I, I've heard what Mr. Colburn has to say, well, if we own it, we can monitor it better. But we, we could have got other land too, you know, the province, if they are monitoring the, the, the property, the wetland, then we would have an opportunity to have another piece of land that perhaps would not be a wetland, something that we could use for housing or some, I don't know, I'm, I'm surmising, I don't know the property size and what, what, how big this land for public purposes is that we're taking over. So I, it, it gave me pause to think about, well, it seems like we missed, not missed, or should have we taken our land for public purpose and leave the wetlands to the province to take care of?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Mr. Colburn.
Through you, your worship, um, to, to Deputy Mayor, so if I could just go back and I guess reiterate, if we own the land, then if, if a, if a individual purchases that particular portion of property, and right now it is functioning as part of a stormwater management area, it's a retention area essentially. Somebody purchases it and they say, okay, I'm going to develop it, I'll fill it in, pay the compensation, and now I'm going to build homes on it. How, in order to, in order to accommodate the stormwater runoff from all of that, there has to be infrastructure put in place. Costs thousands and thousands of dollars, which the town ultimately would have to take over. So retaining these natural wetland areas that are natural stormwater retention areas is to the benefit of the municipality. So if we own it, we control what happens, we can protect it for the long haul. So the key is, yes, it's regulated by the province, but it doesn't mean that somebody can't pay compensation and destroy these wetlands and build on them. And then it's the municipality that has to deal with the ramifications of that. So getting it at this level is benefit to the natural environment, but it's also beneficial to the municipality in terms of asset management, asset management cost down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Mr. Colburn. That actually sounds great that we were able to, you know, I, I guess, you know, kind of protect these wetlands. One of the questions I had is in, I think, the staff report, it talked about maybe future trails and things in there. And I guess when I was looking at it, like, it looks like by the time you get the Wawa buffer and the wetland, it doesn't look like there's actually a lot of access to that land from Bradley Lake Road, so could we still, like, without costing the town a whole lot of money, could we still put trails and stuff in there? With, like, I just, I, I didn't think you were allowed to really do a whole lot around wetland areas or, or the buffer, so I just didn't know if we'd be able to actually use that, like, again, for wetland or for, for, uh, extra water. I just didn't know if we'd be able to use it for future recreation.
Mr. Colburn, please.
Through you, your worship, so you can do activities within the buffer. So you can get a Wawa permit, you can do, you can do trail development, those types of things within the buffer area. It's when you actually get into destroying the wetland, that's when you get into compensation and having to compensate for that. But if there's sufficient room within that buffer that you can put a trail in, then it's, it's a Wawa process. But also it's retaining it as just natural green space.
Thank you, Counselor Luck, thank you, Mr. Colburn. We have a motion on the table, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Item eleven C, ascent of council, Foxborough Ridge subdivision, Andrew Dunn, Peddingill Road. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship, I move council grant ascent to Foxborough Ridge subdivision plan so the plan can be approved by the development officer and registered in the provincial land registration system. So the public street right of way and local government services easement west to the town on filing of the plan.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question? There are none. Please vote now. Counselor Luck? Counselor Miller? Motion carried seven zero. Item number twelve, reports. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to highlight in the Climate Change Committee meeting minutes, one of the things I had requested and our clerk is going to kind of explore it, but I just wanted to, I guess, highlight, highlight it to council, because I believe I just sent it to to the clerk. But it was looking at perhaps doing a potential pilot project similar to our neighboring town of Rossay with the food cycler, which is kind of a dehydrator for compost. I personally bought one just because I was curious, and I, we had a presentation one time, and the town of Rossay ended up doing a pilot with them where it was subsidized. But just seeing a lot of comments online when they are promoting it, it sounds like a lot of Quispam Sis residents have said, boy, it'd be nice if we had something in Quispam Sis. And from my own personal experience by using it, it's just remarkable how much we're composting now, just because a lot of the smelly compost I would throw out. And now we are composting because it works so well. So anyway, I just wanted to, so hopefully, once the clerk gets more information, the committee can can look at perhaps bringing it to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Thank you, worship. I'd move receiving file reports. What do we do then?
They're just for information. Thank you for that. Business arising from the hole, there is none. Looking for adjournment, Counselor Olson, moved by Counselor Olson. We've completed everything. We don't need a second, do we? We do? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question? Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Have a good night, everybody. Enjoy your week. Don't forget cleanup day tomorrow throughout the town with town staff.